Good evening and welcome to the January 25th meeting of the regular session of City Council. If you are here with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with the staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I, excuse me, which is germane to the city council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. On our podium, we have a light system. After you give your name and address, the green light will come on. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light, and at the end of three, the red light, and we ask that you promptly take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, we're going to ask Reverend Dr. Willard Maxwell Jr. with the New Beach Grove Baptist Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Scott will lead us in the pledge. It is the practice of council members to stand for this invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but you are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day and the ability to convene to discuss business matters concerning the citizens of Newport News. Lord, we thank you for the mayor, the city manager, city council members, the city clerk, our city attorneys, city staff and employees, and everyone that helps this city operate. Lord, we ask for you to continue to keep your hands around these officials who serve our city so tirelessly. We ask you to bless and sustain them and allow them to continue to work to the best of their ability. We ask that you allow them to make decisions that are not selfish or party-centered, but we ask that you give them the wisdom, knowledge, and boldness to make decisions based on what's best for the citizens of Newport News. We thank you for entrusting them with the task of caring for our citizens. We thank you for granting them the ability to make wise decisions, decisions based on people's needs and not their own political affiliations or personal interests. Lord, we thank you for their lives and for protecting and guiding them. Even more, we thank you for calling and establishing them in these positions for such a time as this. We pray that service continues to bless individuals that reside in the city and that the effects of their diligence will reap positive benefits for generations to come. We thank you for allowing them to be pillars of society and beacons of light. Lord, we just ask for you to bless this meeting and let everyone, everything be done in decency and in order. Continue to get the glory out of all of our lives. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. We are now at the public hearings. Page three, item E1, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a real estate exchange agreement binding between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Riverside Healthcare Association Incorporated, or Riverside. The city and Riverside desire to exchange interest in property facilitating relocation of the Peninsula Health District's Newport News facility and allowing operations, expansions at Riverside Regional Medical Center. In exchange for receiving the city-owned building located at 416 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard, Riverside will convey 836 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard to the city and provide for the requisite funding for related tenant improvements to benefit the Peninsula Health District. This exchange will allow the Peninsula Health District to move into newly renovated facilities designed to better serve the current and future needs of the Peninsula residents and businesses. Riverside will obtain space to expand operations at the Riverside Regional Medical Center facility. Renovation of 836 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard, renovation of Peninsula Health Department functions, and closing on the property exchange is expected to occur within 18 months. The city will lease 836 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard from Riverside during the renovation period, with the lease terminating at closing of the property transfer. The city manager recommends approval. We have two speakers. Robert Tyer.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name's Robert Tyer. I live at 13 Middlesex Road. I just currently work at the Peninsula Health Center. However, I'm here as a private citizen. And I have found no stipulation in the PPEA that requires public funds be used for the acquisition of property. With that being said, I believe that, you know, this exchange of property is pursuant to PPEA, and I believe it should follow under those guidelines. The citizens served by PHC have not been afforded the opportunity for input prior to this public input, despite multiple city projects like the Grissom Library doing the same. I believe this would be a disruption to services, a major move for the health district to another building during the middle of a pandemic. I believe this also goes against the 2040 comprehensive plan and the Bus Rapid Transit corridor study. I believe moving the health district all the way up J. Clyde next to the interstate is two to three miles further to walk than they currently have to, you know, with this bus rapid transit coming in, they'd only have to go across the bridge across from J. Clyde to Riverside Hospital. I believe the proposed property is five years older than the current PHC and was designed as a department store, and it's now configured as a school, and it would still require over $4 million in renovations despite recently being renovated. The current building of PHC was designed as a healthcare facility, and it is currently maintained by the city. The entrance to the proposed former Stratford University site is the eastbound I-64 merge lane, and I don't know if anybody's ever tried to get onto that property, but there's people...
American Rescue Plan Home Funds, and I recommend approval.
Okay, again, no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page one eighty-seven, item G five, Madam Manager.
And the second piece of that item is a request to approve a resolution accepting and appropriating two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand and eighty-seven dollars in home investment partnership, American Rescues Plan Home Art Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide housing, support services, and shelter to persons experiencing homelessness and other vulnerable populations, and I recommend approval.
Okay, again, no speakers. Sorry. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move it out, sir.
Okay.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, there are no appropriations listed for this evening, so that moves us into citizen comments. I see several names that have been submitted. We will ask that you respond to your name as called, and also ask if the person before you has said something that you were about to say, maybe not to duplicate that. And with that spirit of going forward, Roy Perry Bay. Good evenings.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. I did want to make a comment. You know Norfolk used to brag about being the smoothest-running city, and I have to say that Newport News has taken that crown. Never seen such a unified movement. I'm really excited, and I'm happy and honored to be a citizen of Newport News. I'm tucked out here, man. I just want to say thank you. There's not a time I haven't called your office, whether it's leaves, pickup, or whatever it is, and your office and the city manager's always been responsive. And so I want to thank you. With that, I'll throw a caveat in, please put some sidewalks on Tabbs Lane. It's really dangerous. It really is. So I'm here tonight to weigh in on behalf of United Front for Justice. As you know, last year, the legislature was so kind in signing the law collective bargaining of city employees. You know, we're now four decades later. It's a long time coming. So I want to encourage the city council tonight to prayerfully consider adopting a resolution or ordinance allowing public-sector collective bargaining. I think this is important. They do the hard work for us, trash collection, backwater, or waste, you know, handling. And I just think it's very important that we have equity on this issue. It's really, really important. So I'm asking Newport News to be the model for the region by setting in place. We know that fire, police, rescue, first responders had long relationships with the city for many, many years. But our sanitation workers and others have not been so kind to have that privilege. Please consider that and extend that opportunity to them. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Scott, Marcellus, and Jenkins, and others, thank you so much.
Thank you. Latasha Holloway.
Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I just wanted to talk a little bit this evening about the American dream. The Virginia we love is the Virginia that looks out for one another. But when you look around, sometimes the leaders in our fine cities appear that they only have interest in enriching themselves and looking out for their crony friends. We live in a city where our leaders, at times, can be tone-deaf to the needs of the citizens. Our city leadership has routinely ignored the pain of the everyday people who make this city work. So when we talk about that term "American dream", like many of us, I know how hard it is to dream when you struggle to make ends meet. As a single mother of four children with unique needs, I know how hard it is to sleep when you have fear of retaliation when you get to work the next day for trying to spread the gospel of our rights. I know the pain of trying to stretch your paycheck just enough to make groceries, then pray that God will make a way to feed your family for the rest of the month until the next paycheck. These realities are all too real for so many of our city workers. And that's why we must make our demands known tonight, and I pray that you answer the prayers of our good union workers from the UE. The right to collective bargaining is the first step to realizing the American dream for so many of us. We must demand that our council draft a resolution or ordinance tonight, you can do this tonight, to give us the exclusive certification to agree or to engage with the city government to collective bargain on our behalf. This is how you will help the UE, the good workers of this city, to reach their American dream. I'm here to say tonight and declare that we can do it. We can provide a safe work environment for our city workers. We can pay our workers a livable wage. We can provide them with adequate health care. We can do it. We can give them these equitable opportunities that will diversify this city once and for all. But the first thing that needs to happen, it's time the government is put back into the hands of the people. So I say tonight, UE, can we do it? We can do it. We can do it. We can do it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good evening.
Good evening. Statistics from Chuck Todd on Meet the Press stated that seventy-six percent of the country feels our democracy is under threat. As a resident of the southeast community, I feel the democracy for us is under threat. The petition signers and I still stand against moving Huntington from thirty-four oh one Orchid Avenue. Senator Cory Booker stated, "The best of our democracy will come out if people do not give up." Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm here speaking on behalf of these wonderful city workers that came out here to organize, put their livelihoods and everything on the line today. And I would think it would be in the interest of y'all that's sitting here today, of all the hard work that they're doing, to make sure that their hard work is realizing by pushing the ordinance to recognize them so that they can come to the table. These are the people that knows the nicks and the grannies of everything of how this city works. And they should be the ones that's sitting at the table so that Newport News could become a better and greater city. And also, I'm going to say, this is going to be off topic. I'm going to make it real short. Thank you, Mr. Harris, bringing the issue about the TARP money. Make sure some of this TARP money get in around the city and get in certain communities. Because there's a lot of election seats that's up, a lot of districts have been drawn, and people are well organized. They want to be heard. We coming out of COVID. People have lost their livelihoods, have lost jobs. Think about that. People are well organized. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Blazin' Bloom, and I'll be speaking on what many phenomenal speakers have already spoken on. I'll be representing the Hampton Roads Green Party as our co-chair, but I'll be speaking from personal experience in a way. I'm only eighteen. I didn't get to see the nineteen hundreds. I didn't get to see last century. I didn't get to live through the churning of a new millennia because I was born three and a half years afterwards. I've heard stories of the fight for unions during the civil rights era, one of the most devastating, one of the horriest, but also most inspirational moments in American history, when MLK and several other civil rights leaders took a stand saying that people deserve rights, regardless of your skin color, regardless of what you do for a living, you deserve basic rights. That is the fight that is faced by our workers today. Though it may have began decades ago, it is still and truly continuing and alive. But in a nation that prides itself on its democracy, a democratic republic or representative democracy, it really is a hypocrisy that we don't allow those rights to our workers, to ensure workplace democracy. And I know that you didn't have this ability until recently, until the state legislator finally gave you this ability to ensure that our workers have collective bargaining. It's been far too long that you've been denied this right, but you finally have it. But this isn't a fight that just will have results for now. This is a fight the results will be lasting for decades, for generations, because me and my generation will have the results, will benefit from ensuring a safe workplace, decent pay, working conditions, and the generations that come after us. This is a fight that will leave a legacy for generations to come and ensure that this nation, that this city, continues to run successfully after your terms end, after we all pass away. And jeez, that sounds morbid, but this is about our legacy. What did we do during this pandemic? What did we do afterwards? We stood up for what was right. We saw the inadequacies that came about during that pandemic, and we said enough is enough. We are going to do what's right for our workers and for those who will come after us. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Laura Goran. I'm the research director at the Commonwealth Institute for Fiscal Analysis, which is a Richmond-based organization that advances racial and economic justice in Virginia by advocating for public policies that are designed in partnership with the people most impacted and shaped by credible, accessible fiscal and economic research. I'm here today because the research shows that collective bargaining benefits working people and communities as the whole. First, communities as a whole benefit from reduced turnover and increased employee voice on the job, thereby improving the quality of public services. Specifically, collective bargaining provides a way that represented workers can formally express their ideas for how to improve their workflow and workplaces. This can improve communication and a sense of belonging. Having the experience of collective bargaining even increases engagement in small-d democratic governance. Second, collective bargaining also typically results in pay raises, helping to shrink, although not eliminate, the public-sector penalty. This is much needed. In Virginia, local government employees as a whole are typically paid thirty percent less than their peers in the private sector who have the same levels of education and experience. And according to analysis that we did this fall, which I have copies of, if I can give them to somebody, here in Newport News, many full-time workers are not paid enough to afford a decent quality of life. And five out of six couldn't reasonably support a small family on what they are paid. The problem's even worse if we look just at full-time, non-managerial employees in key frontline departments of general services, human services, libraries, parks and wrecks, vehicle and equipment services, and waterworks. And in those departments as a whole, nine out of every ten non-managerial employees are paid too little to reasonably live and raise a family here. Furthermore, due to the cumulative impact of past and present barriers to education, employment, and other opportunities, workers of color are often in lower-paid positions and are likely to benefit the most from the protections of collective bargaining. And because women are more likely than men to work in the public sector, strong collective bargaining rights can help ameliorate the broader societal problem of gender pay disparities. Put simply, collective bargaining improves our workplaces and our communities, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, I want to start by saying, today, we honor Dr. King's legacy fighting for human rights and equality of black, brown, and the working-class people. Dr. King stood against the social-economic disparities that plague our community. We worked rain, snow, and sleet to assure that the city is functioning twenty-four seven. We are central as a Newport News Police and Fire Department, but yet have the lowest budget compared to other cities in Virginia. Workers need collective bargaining to assure fairness and livable wages. If we are good enough to work for the city, we should be paid enough to live in the city. Collective bargaining would address the nepotism and favoritism that plagues our city workers. Our passed up on promotions that are well-deserved only to be handed to those who are handpicked because of their relationship or friendship with those in power. Collective bargaining will assure fairness across the board and allow qualified employees to be considered for promotions because of their skill, experience, not their relationship to management. The way we can continue to honor Dr. King is through the work of the union movement. Every day is a day of service defending the rights of working-class and city workers. As Dr. King stated, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Dr. King fought for workers' rights, social justice, and economic change within American society. Let us move into this new year with a renewed sense of purpose and the right for collective bargaining so workers can have a seat at the table to negotiate terms that are fair to them. Thank y'all.
Gary McCullum, and I wanted to please remind people to give the name and their address before speaking.
Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, Council. I do have my passport and visa. I know I'm from Virginia Beach. I'm Gary McCullum. I'm a member of the Metro Ministers Conference, one of the oldest ministerial conferences in the country, founded in eighteen eighty-two. And I also head the Social and Political Concerns Ministry for that conference. I stand here today, as you've heard, in support of these workers. It's been mentioned, Dr. King, almost fifty-four years to today, actually April third, nineteen sixty-eight, gave his last speech in Memphis. And we know why he was in Memphis. He was standing up for workers like are in this room tonight, standing up not just for wages, but for their dignity, for respect, for safety, safe working conditions. You know the history. You know that two African-American workers have been killed on the job. And so I stand before you tonight as members of the clergy, and there are other clergy who are here, and maybe they'll be speaking tonight. But we think this is the right thing to do. We know it's tough. I've managed budgets before. We know this is hard, but it can be done. And it's the right thing to be done. Because these workers, we've got a great city here. But why is it great? It's because of those men and women back there. That's why it's great. And if you want to keep it great, you got to do the right thing with regard to collective bargaining. Let them come to the table to make sure that these conditions, not again just about wages. Wages is a big piece of it, but it's more than that, and you've heard it. Dr. King said it best during that last speech. Because I don't work for the city, but why am I here? Why did I drive from Virginia Beach? He said, "If I don't stand up for the sanitation workers, I can't worry about what happens to me." He says, "If I don't stand up for the sanitation workers, what will happen to them?" And that's the question. That's why you see people here tonight. We are in support of this. Do the right thing. Let's let them collectively bargain so we can improve the quality of life for these workers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good afternoon. I'm Romell Smith, council, mayor. I'm here today for collective bargaining, fair treatment. As the Constitution says, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, we need this, more than ever. Unfair treatment, I can go on, and we need your votes for this. I'm a city worker, been here seventeen years. I'm from Newport News. I live in Hampton, unfortunately, because I can't afford Newport News to live. I'm twenty-five cents over qualifying for food stamps. And I just ask that you consider this. I like working for Newport News because I'm one that gives the kids of the future hope, or anyone in the community. They see me, and they say, "Hey, you doing it." And I try to encourage them to do it, too. It's the reason why y'all putting, well, we're putting these tags on these trucks to hire more because we can't get them here because of the pay. We need a seat at the table, too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Mark Hoggart. I live at one-twenty-one Powhatan Parkway in Hampton. And I have the privilege to serve as the pastoral associate at Immaculate Conception Catholic Church in Hampton. And I stand here tonight, speaking on behalf of Tidewater Sowers of Justice and for Catholics in general. Since at least eighteen ninety-one, the Catholic Church has fully supported the right of workers to form unions or other associations to secure their rights to fair wages and working conditions. In the words of Saint John Paul II, who worked closely with the labor movement in communist Poland, "The experience of history teaches that organizations of this type are an indispensable element of social life, especially in modern industrialized societies." As you know, as a matter of Virginia law, cities and counties in the Old Dominion now have the option to recognize unions of their employees and engage in collective bargaining with them. Catholic social teaching states that no one may deny the rights to organize without attacking human dignity itself. Therefore, Catholics firmly oppose organized efforts, such as those historically seen in Virginia, to break existing unions and prevent workers from organizing. Civic workers today are particularly in need of protection, including the right to organize and bargain collectively. U.S. labor law reform is needed to meet these problems as well as to provide more timely and effective remedies for unfair labor practices. In the Catholic Church in the United States, we mark the month of January as Respect Life Month, embracing our understanding that all human life is sacred. It's appropriate, then, that Catholics throughout the city, along with others of faith and conscience, ask the city of Newport News to take specific steps to offer channels for collective bargaining with city worker unions as soon as possible. Thank you.
I want to take my mask down for this. I mean, you got a spit shield, so that's great. Hi, I'm Steph Sterner. I'm a member of many organizations. One of the ones I'm here to represent today is the Tidewater Workers Assembly and Southern Workers Assembly, and also Virginia Beach Coalition, Virginia Beach Coalition. I've been a worker for years. I'm coming over from Virginia Beach, but I heard someone was hurting my brother and sister. Am I they there? Because, you know, all types of genders, right? They're not making enough. They can't raise not even one child here. I know the pain because I'm coming over from Virginia Beach. I have a daughter who's autistic, and, you know, I do a lot of gig work. I grew up in Virginia Beach. I never thought that Newport News would be like Virginia Beach. I really didn't. Every month, when it's time to pay the rent, I know it's eventually going to go up because every year it does. It's almost a thousand dollars. I got like sixty cents in my bank account. You should pay your workers more. I noticed there was a statue of two of your city workers, Fire Department, Police Department. You're paying them more. Can't you pay your sanitation workers more? The ones who purify your water, the ones who collect your holiday trash? I mean, I noticed May first, twenty twenty-one, workers now have the right to pursue collective bargaining. I look at that date again, and it rhymes in, that's a holiday. It's known as Workers' Day or International Workers' Day, May first. Today commemorating the historic struggles and gains made by workers and the labor movement. It's always observed in many countries. We just do it on Labor Day, but most of the time, we ignore the cries of our workers. We just, you know, have our barbecues. I mean, they have a right to stay in their city, just like I'm fighting to stay in Virginia Beach. I mean, I'm a Navy brat. My dad was in the military. You know, he ended up with a contractor job after he got out. I mean, once he's gone, he's gone, right? I mean, it's even hard to apply for rent relief, let alone trying to hold on to a good-paying job. You know, you just ask it for a little bit more. I know you guys got it. A lot of cities got it. I guess it's about priorities and where you're going to funnel your money. But please, help them out. Let them stay here. If they grew up here in Newport News, don't they deserve to stay and raise their family? All right, thank you, guys.
Can I call Steph Sterner? Steph Sterner, did I call you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, citizens, city of Newport News. It's a great honor to be standing here, to be able to speak in behalf of our city workers and collective bargaining. And as I've listened to fellow citizens, Norfolk and around, one thing is stuck out in my mind, and that has been pride. Each one of you, City Council members, take pride in your job. You take pride when your kids see you coming home from work, and they have respect for you and the job that you do. This community, our citizens who are employed as sanitation workers, they need to be heard collectively. Who wants to have their child not excited about their mother or their father coming home from work? They want to have that pride, that pride. Yes, my father or my mother works for the city of Newport News. They look forward to the things that that paycheck provides, insurance that they might have a good education, that pair of sneakers that they want, that self-pride when they collectively be with their friends. Where does your parents work? Where does your father work? They want to have that pride. My father or my mother works for the city of Newport News. They want to be able to be proud amongst their peers about what their family does, twenty-five, thirty years. 25, 30 years, you put in hard labor, sun shining, rain, sleet, snow, and you do this for 20 years, 35 years, and you can't retire comfortably, comfortably. And you put in your time, your labor, your body. Let's think about that. Let's think about it. I live in the southeast section of Newport News, 915 11th Street. I take pride. Our neighborhood watch program is one of the best in this country collectively. We walk through our neighborhood. We pick up paper. We interact with the community. We pick up paper. We don't mind doing that, but it also gives us the opportunity to engage our citizens in collectively being able to ensure that we have an environment that's safe and clean. Let's take that seriously. Pride. I've had a many a job in this city, shirt and tie, but that doesn't make the integrity of a person's heart, the integrity of your, when you can go to work and come home and have a paycheck that takes care of your family, your medical needs. Let's take that into consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Martin Caden. Carden, I'm sorry.
Good evening, all the city council, mayor. My name is Martin Carden. I'm an equipment operator for the Solid Waste Division. I'm pretty much here just to give you guys a snapshot of what it looks like on the ground for workers. I work with Romel. It's tough. We don't make a lot of money, as you guys have already heard, as you know. It's going to be hard for, well, for me to put this in your perspective. If you guys needed things picked up around the city, but there wasn't anybody to do it, you know, who would you call? You'd probably call a contractor and have to pay him more money. Why not pay us what we're worth? I think somebody said earlier, the private sector gets 30% more doing the same job that we do. And as this man said, how do you have pride knowing that you're not getting paid your worth? A couple of you guys probably have met Terrence Harrell. Terrence Harrell, he met with a couple of you council members. He's not here anymore, and that's happening a lot. That's pretty much the snapshot of what it's looking like in public works and throughout the city for the workers. People are leaving and they're not coming back. The wages are not competitive. We're here for collective bargaining, for livable wages. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you, to Mr. Mayor, this august body of council members, all of whom I've met personally, and I know their commitment and value, the work ethic that you do for this city. In fact, I read today, what caught my eye, as I've looked on the website for Newport News, is it says Newport News is the place where great things are happening. And the key linguistic structure within the attentive vernacular is found in that word ending in ing. It ends in ing because things are happening. And that means that there is a consistency of great things that are taking place during that right now. City workers keep working, keep operating, keep coming, keep performing, keep getting up and keep functioning. But they should never have to keep struggling if there is a proper mechanism in place where they are also benefiting, because they work hard. And so they can keep saying that this is the place where great things are happening. Let's do that. And as a pastor, they don't only come to work, but I see them in worship. I see them standing today. My heart is lifted just to see one of our members standing outside today. I see the value of their commitment. I pray that you see the value of their employment. I've seen this council do amazing things. I've seen this city complete some outstanding projects. I've seen the vision of this city be described in incredible ways. And I've seen Newport News stand out and lead in multiple displays. And this is another time where I believe that we can lead again, leading and making sure that workers are fairly compensated, lead in assuring that employers are aggressively rewarded, lead in strong advocating standing for collective expanding, lead in setting the trend that working people deserve gainful earnings and employment. Dreams can be realized and reached with hard and respectful working, because at the end of the day, I think Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was right when he shared, "Life's most persistent urgent question is, what are we doing for others?" And I know, council members, you're doing so many things for others, and you stand representing so many others. Your vote gives right to so many others, life to so many others. Just don't leave out these others. Just don't leave out those who have great influence, and your great leadership and your great endorsement, because it's true, Newport News is the place where great things are happening, including this moment, where you have the chance to make someone's life worth living and have families of these workers in surviving. They're not looking for a handout. They're looking for a hand in so that their voice can be heard about the work they give out. Let's help them, as we can all attest to the fact, somebody has helped us.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time and attention tonight. My name is Jordan Bond. I'm here with, as the president of the International Association of Firefighters, Local 794, right here in Newport News. The Newport News Fire Department responds to tens of thousands of calls each year. Our members are highly trained in multiple disciplines, including fire suppression and emergency medical services. Our members respond to all hazards within Newport News, including hazardous materials, marine incidents, technical rescues, and even bomb threats. Our newest members are expected to be proficient at hundreds of fireground tasks and obtain the highest out-of-hospital emergency certification as just the foundation of their career. It takes years to become proficient making the life and death decisions that our members make daily. We must decide the best way to attack a house fire while taking life safety and property conservation into account. We must quickly assess our patients and decide on the proper treatment and emergency medical situations. The list of decisions that we make to ensure the safety of Newport News and the Newport News Fire Department goes on and on. What is conspicuously lacking from that list of decisions that we make is any say in our wages, our benefits, and working conditions. We are not able to speak for ourselves, but must rely on others outside of our profession, and we expect them to understand the needs and challenges we have to maintain and recruit a happy and healthy workforce that is able to mitigate all hazards in Newport News. The members of the International Association of Firefighters, Local 794, are here tonight in solidarity with the other city department unions. Their fight is definitely our fight. Collective bargaining in the City of Newport News will give employees of the city a say in how they are treated and compensated. The expert employees who know their profession best are asking for the ability to bargain with you in good faith, the benefits, compensation, and working conditions in order to attract and retain the country's best firefighters, medics, street workers, human services, the best city workers in the country. I ask, as the elected leaders of this city, that you join with us and recognize that workers' rights are human rights. Together, we can shape Newport News for the better. We can make Newport News a premier place to work that has a reputation for taking care of our citizens and our employees. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Those are all the cards I have. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and giving us your opinion. We appreciate and value every employee in this city. With that in mind, I'm going to ask the manager if she would give us a report back in appropriate time. She needs a recommendation to council on the matter that you've heard here tonight.
Absolutely. We have obviously been talking about it at staff level and talked with the city attorney, so we'll come back to council as soon as we can and give you more information.
Thank you. Sure.
I wanted to thank all of you for coming tonight and sharing your concerns, and I do want to stand in integrity and say that I agree that all of us people deserve basic rights, fair pay, and good working conditions. And I want to say thank you to all of you who work in the City of Newport News for all that you do to make our city a great place to live, work, and raise our families. I'm thankful for our city manager, and I'm hoping that our city attorney can come back to us so that we can sit down at the table and see what it is that the city can do regarding this issue. So I want to say thank you so much, and thank you for all you do. We could not do it without you being here and being a part of our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We are now at new business. Madam Manager?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, I'd like to thank everyone for all the kindnesses shown to me and my family during the recent loss of my brother. My family appreciates all of you. Thank you so very much for your kindnesses.
Councilwoman Scott.
Yes, good evening to everyone, and thank you all for coming down tonight to share your concerns. I know it takes a lot of carriage to come down and to, especially when you work for the city, to tell us how you feel about what's going on and express to us what you want. I know that can't be easy, but I applaud your carriage, and I look forward to the conversation that we have with the city manager and our city attorney to see what happens next. Also, I just want to offer condolences again to our city clerk, Ms. Mabel here, Mabel Jenkins Washington, Mabel Washington Jenkins. I'm getting her name all messed up, on the loss of her brother. My heart goes out to you. And also to another citizen, Christine Davies, who has lost two brothers to COVID within 60 days. And I'm going somewhere with this. I just want to thank you all who have been participating and wearing your masks, social distancing, and keeping your hands clean. As you can see, this is really important, even though you hear all kinds of things about you don't need to wear your mask, maybe you should wear, you know. I think you need to wear your mask because it's just starting to come. I have over 100 people in my immediate family, and for the first time, it has touched my family. So, and it has touched my neighbors, and it has touched friends, and, you know, everybody knows somebody now who has been touched by this pandemic. So our Sherwood Shopping Center is still open, right, Mr. Mayor? The Sherwood Shopping Center is still open for your vaccines. I think you can get your COVID test in there. I just encourage you all to be a part of the success of what happens here in Newport News, because so many cities are now faced with this, and we don't want to be one of the statistics where we can't go anywhere and do anything because the pandemic has gotten so severe here in our city. So I just, that was on my heart. I had to get it out there. Also, I missed the last meeting, so I just need to just thank a couple of people. The 20th anniversary of the One City Celebrations Holiday Food Drive was nothing short of amazing. It was blessed because we expected certain amount of food to be generated, but we exceeded our expectations to the point where we fed over 600 families through our drive-through, and we supported five other food pantries and stocked them, and they were able to do some things that we, touched some people that we couldn't touch here in the North District. So all of this was made possible first by the One City Celebrations Holiday Food Drive Committee. They are so dedicated, and most of them have been with me for 20 years, and they have done a phenomenal job of making sure that this event goes off in the level of excellence that they know that I require. So I have to thank our Director of Parks, Mr. Michael Poplosky, and his team, the staff at Demi Community Center. I don't know their last names, so I will say some of them. Jeff, I think he's one of the directors, assistant directors, Dave, and Philip, and Sabrina, and Q, and Dwayne, because we relied heavily on them to get this project done. And we're just so grateful that they were able to do that for us. And a few elementary schools participated, and they were phenomenal. They got really excited about it, and someone from the Newport News Public School did a video of the kids getting ready for the One City Celebrations Holiday Food Drive, and I was just amazed at the enthusiasm. So if you all have not seen it, go to the Newport News Public School TV station and watch that video as well. And it was Jenkins, Greenwood, Sanford, Catherine Johnson, and whatever Lee Hall is, I don't know the new name now, but Lee Hall, the students there, participated as well. Thank you to the Sheriff Department for logistics, for helping us to move all the things we couldn't move on our own, and your team, and of course, the Police Department. Tomorrow's image haircuts free. They've been doing it for at least 10 years, and that's a Herculean task for them to move their barber chairs from their shop to come over to the Demi Community Center to provide this service to the public, so we don't take them for granted. And I'm going to give them one more plug. They also do, they have a barber training school, so if you're looking to get a job or you're looking for some job training, please support tomorrow's image. The Feel Good Crew, who's been with us, and they provided music for the party. And also, just a special thank you to Mayor Price and Dr. Cherry for coming out to show your support. We appreciate you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Day.
Oh, my God, you don't forget about me tonight. That's because I'm here. Right. Just want to thank-
I suggest we give her twice the amount of time.
No, 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 we've stayed here long enough. I just want to say good evening to everyone, and thank you all for coming out tonight. I just have to start by giving condolences to one of the best clerks within the Hampton Rose area, and I might even say our nation, Mabel Jenkins. Just condolences to you and your family on the passing of your brother, and we sincerely support you, and I have certainly been keeping you in prayer for strength and just peace for you and your family. I also want to say that I had a chance on Sunday to be able to participate in the prayer service, a special prayer service at Liberty Baptist Church in Hampton. It was sponsored by Commissioner Reverend Tiffany Boyle and some of the other pastors. Pastor Maxwell was here. He's one of the, he was one of the speakers, and Pastor Tremaine Johnson was one of the speakers. And it was very unique in the fact that because there has been so much crime nationwide, and as localities, as states, even as a nation, we have, are troubled and trying to get a handle on where is all of this crime coming from. So it was really refreshing to be there, to be able to have prayer and the way that pastors were assigned different topics to pray on. But I think the biggest thing within that room was that it gave so many people strength and hope and brought a togetherness for the cities of Newport News and Hampton and others who shared in the congregation. So I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Boyle, as well as all of the pastors who were a part of organizing the event. And I do want to say thank you for all of you who came out tonight about the collective bargaining. I really did appreciate hearing about the comments from all of you. And of course, with our city, we do want to do the right thing. And so I will be rest to, and stand alert of whatever the city manager and our city attorney advises us to do in reference to how we can move forward with the collective bargaining issue. So thank you all for coming out. And also, I have to say happy birthday to my council counterpart, Councilwoman Patricia Woodbury will be celebrating on the 28th.
27.
27, I'm sorry. And so we say happy birthday to her. And so also, to remind everyone that in a few months, we will be ready to, I hope you get your sneakers ready, get your self-ready, your whole attitude ready for our One City Marathon. We will have an entire weekend, so you can find out more information on our website, but it will be the beginning of March, and so please participate. It's also so much fun for our city and from young people to adults, all of us get to get out and have a good time and enjoy each other as a city. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury.
Thank you. And-
And Ms. Tina, I just have to say, well, you wish me a happy birthday, I wish you a happy birthday on February 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we kind of grow old together.
Right.
Thank you so much for coming out and expressing your needs and your desires and your hope. And I want to give you all hope, that we as city officials want to see the best for you. That is all of our collective desire, I am sure. And so I thank you for coming down and always saying what you need to say, and know that we'll be listening and waiting for the next step. I want to, again, with everybody else, express condolences to our wonderful clerk on the passing of her brother. It's been a difficult time for a lot of people. And so I think what happened on Sunday, although I couldn't be there, I was out of town, but I think starting things with prayer is where it's at. And so I am so glad we start every council meeting with prayer. It's important to me. So I thank you all. I wish you well, and we will certainly get back with you. I'm sure of that. And to my fellow council members, it is wonderful that we can work together for the greater good of everybody here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
I'd like to say good evening again to everyone for coming, and thank you for coming, and those who are watching. We want to say thank you for being with us tonight for city council. It's been a long time since our council chamber has been this full, so I'm glad that you all are wearing masks. That's a great thing. Rather than to be redundant, but to be redundant, I'd like to say, continue to give my condolences to Mabel Washington Jenkins, our clerk in the passing of her brother. Also, the family of Alton Askew Jr., known to most people as AJ, in his passing. He was a great friend and was loved by many people, so our condolences, my prayers with each of you and with your family. I agree with Councilwoman Vick that the prayer vigil that was held on Sunday was very powerful, and to have all of the churches come together that were available to come together for prayer. Prayer changes things. And so we understand that we're in warfare. And I thank Pastor Johnson and Pastor Maxwell for being there on Sunday and offering the prayers that you did. It is a warfare cry right now for our community. If you believe in prayer, we need to continue to pray for unity in our community. We need to continue to pray for protection against COVID-19, to pray about gun violence and any type of violence. We need to continue to pray for those things. Continue to pray for protection over your family and your household. It didn't just stop on Sunday, but it continues. The word says pray without ceasing, so that's something that we need to continue to do. So I want to say thank you to Commissioner Boyle and to Apostle Spells for co-hosting that event. I also like to thank the tourism office for their graciousness in placing the James A. Fields House on the city's ambassador pass for January the 15th. Please note that the James A. Fields House located at 61727th Street is an African-American museum that's now open on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday by appointment only. So if you're interested in coming for a tour of the house, I encourage you to give us a call at 757-813-6014, so that you can schedule an appointment for you or your family. And the last thing I'd like to say, Groundhog Day, the Groundhog Day program is scheduled for February the 2nd at the Virginia Living Museum. They have limited capacity for people to come out, but we are interested to see what the groundhog will say to determine whether we have more snow or an early spring. And I don't know about you, but I want an early spring, no more snow. Thanks to all, and God bless you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Yes, and good evening to everyone. And as has already been shared, and I want to echo those sentiments, we want to thank each and every one of you who has come out to let your voice be heard. I can say, in my, I guess this is my sixth year, seeing some faces in here for the first time and being able to come up and speak, that means a lot, because that shows that people are listening, people are engaged. And the more you are engaged, the more our council and officials can know what's going on and try as best as possible to meet those needs of those here in our city. So look forward to getting with our city manager, city attorney, and seeing what we could do moving forward. This Saturday, we will have our fifth annual Re-Up School Supply Drive. What this consists of is providing school supplies and other necessary materials for our students here in the city to be successful, as we are now at that halfway mark where they're wrapping up the first semester of the school year and preparing for the second semester of the school year. And the whole gist of this program is to, you know, at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the school year, a lot of people have school supplies that they issue out to students. Well, about this time of year, some of those pencils get dull, some of those crowns get dull, some of those scissors aren't as sharp. So we want to make sure that our students have what they need to finish up the second half of the school year just as much as they were excited about the beginning of the school year. And believe me, our young people need as much encouragement, along with supplies, as we could possibly give them. And we are looking forward to doing that this Saturday, the 29th, from 2:00 to about 4:30 at the Demi Community Center. Please, if you're planning to attend or share information about it, be mindful that it is, you're talking about snow. There is snow being called for Saturday, so we're going to monitor the weather to see if we need to make some adjustments. But we are going to have it at some point, if we have to reschedule it from this Saturday, because we want as many people as possible to be able to pick up those supplies. I do want to send my condolences to you, Mabel, and to your family. As much as she does for us, when we are in need, or if there's a time of bereavement, she goes out of her way to make sure that we can provide any resources or just a kind word. So I want to share my kind words with you, Ms. Mabel, that we are praying for you, we're lifting you and your family up and keeping you encouraged during this time. And also, to one of our stalwarts in the North District, the family of Mr. Esau Saunders, as he passed away a couple of days ago. Longtime member of our community, longtime member of First Baptist Church Morrison, was one of our Black history orators throughout the month of February that I grew up listening to. But he passed this week, and we just want to lift his family up in prayer as well, as he will definitely be missed. He was a part of a lot of civic organizations in the community. He was also always a part of, I think Pastor Maxwell may know about, the men's breakfast they used to have on Thursdays at the Golden Corral. He was a longtime member of attending that. So we just want to keep him and his family in prayer during this time, as he will definitely, definitely, definitely be missed. And that's all I have, Mayor Price. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
I'll make this really brief. My last name is Jenkins, and my family came from the Welsh coal mining area in Great Britain. And three generations of my family worked as coal miners. I support collective bargaining, and I support organized labor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the community and those who helped with the MLK Day of Service Food Drive. We surpassed last year, which was already a record. We obtained 11,305 pounds of food, $15,409.10, which equates to 71,057 meals. I just want to thank those who donated food and monitored donations. It was amazing the outpouring that was given this day. And I'd like to thank my partners in crime, Congressman Bobby Scott, Delegate Marcia Price, Sheriff Gabe Morgan, Police Chief Drew, Riverside Health System, and the Virginia Unity Project. I just want to thank all of those who also came out to help in that warm sunny day, Chief, right? He learned about warmers, heat warmers. It's cold out there for four hours, but it's a day that warms your heart, seeing people come out and pour out given to others in need. I also want to thank all the workers that kept our roads safe during this last weekend. It's cold and it's tough, I know, being out there in weather, and you did a great job. The community was safe. And I just want to, can't mention enough, our police chief, our fire and emergency personnel for all that they did. Looks like we may be calling on your help again this weekend, but hopefully not. And lastly, as mentioned about COVID testing, we do have a testing facility. It does require you to have an appointment. They will be open this weekend as well. Normally, they're open from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., but then you need appointments only for testing. But vaccinations are also available, which we strongly and highly recommend. The website is VDH Testing Appointment Website. Thank you again for coming out.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I usually don't do this, but I did, I had a call. And whenever I get a call from somebody saying what wonderful job someone was doing, I want to make sure I announce it. I did have a citizen call me and said he was on his way back from Weemsburg, and that the job that the Public Works were doing with clearing the roads and clearing everything, and it's so efficiently, he just had to call and say what a great job they have done and are doing. And so I want to pass that on, because we hear plenty of complaints, but we don't always hear the good things that are happening, and that certainly was a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there is no further business, may what you say and do uplift the city of Newport News. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night. Stay safe.